I call the Halliday City Council meeting of December tenth, twenty twenty four to order at seven oh one. Your honor, please follow the roll.
All right, Ellensburg Yelson.
Yeah.
Counselor LaSalle.
Here.
Counselor Isom.
Here.
Mary Lockenbrock.
Here.
Counselor Flores.
Here.
Counselor Strauss.
Here.
Counselor Rower.
Please rise for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank you all for being here and taking the time of your busy lives to attend. Any guests who are physically present need to fill out the meeting's sign in sheet near the door.
You did, you did.
We're running a hybrid meeting tonight, so to allow those who want to attend remotely can do so. Down on background noise and feedback, remote attendees should unmute themselves while not speaking. Staff members and guests on the agenda will need to unmute themselves to give reports to council. Audience and members may unmute themselves to speak during system comments. This on the agenda is to approve the council minutes from November twelfth, twenty twenty four.
I move that the governing body, City of Halsey, approved the November twelfth city council minutes as submitted.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries. Next item on my agenda is the financial reports for November twenty twenty four, providing the package of questions, comments, discussion. There is none, I'd indicate a motion.
I move that the governing body of the City of Halsey approved the November twenty twenty four financial reports and journal entries as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is agenda adjustments. Brianna, are there any adjustments?
No, no adjustments.
Holy crap. So next is delegations, and don't see the Lynn County Sheriff's Office quite yet. So we will move on to the Central Inn Bond Advisory. So, do you have your senators?
Just a second.
Okay, sure.
My name is Steven Kiro, a school board member.
I'm part early, also on the school board.
Thanks for having us here today.
That's what I'm thinking.
Okay.
With a grin?
So we're like the, we're the school board members, but we're also on the bond advisory committee as observers and attention to it. So the bond advisory committee is a, it's a group of community members, parents, teachers, staff, non-parents, retired folks. We're on it as, you know, to pay attention and engage, but we, we're not part of the voting group. So we don't get an actual say in what was found by this group, so. So. We need the bond advisory committee, we did that, and we're going to talk about community feedback and then grant recommendations. Next. Okay, so the charge, I want to see that, the CBI gives community bond advisory committee was to get that group of people, they spend about a year going through a process to review the school, to see what kind of capacity needs they need, like is speculation growing, we have enough classrooms, what's our infrastructure like, how's our ADA accessibility, and just big broad assessment. And at the end I come up with a recommendation for the school board. Next. Two hundred and jewels, okay, so yeah, I talked about this. Oh, so Winona was the group that we hired to facilitate this whole process. Their Native American owned company started in Eastern Oregon. Cassie is the one that's been working on this a lot, she's from Woodbridge. School board was on it, district staff was on it for providing all the information that was needed. And then Wilson Architecture and Systems West engineering for the design. Talk about goals.
Sure, so the board set these goals before we had developed the committee. Create a supportive identity and learning environment for middle school age students because they're jumbled with the high school students. Both the high school and elementary campuses are to remain active, demonstrate good stewardship of district facilities and explore options for increasing energy efficiency, consider opportunities for community use of district buildings and support a holistic approach for wellness and safety for students and staff. And to kind of hit some of that, like the safety, the high school campus is wide open. I don't, do you know how many exterior doors there are?
I don't, but even the windows don't lock either, so like there's multiple ways to get into that building. It's based on, you guys know, it's based on California design where all the doors are on the outside. You walk around the building to go into the classroom, through the central hallway and then into classrooms, so it's not a good way to, to keep it safe. There, I want to hit one more thing too, number two is that both campuses are turned to being open and active. So we learned our lessons on the first two bonds that we went out for when we were trying to consolidate to one campus. Eric, you guys loud and clear, we're keeping the grade school and staying active, we're keeping the high school, two separate campuses, and that's that. So this is the calendar that we started out with, all the ones in Grayland what it went through. So we had, we met back in December of twenty twenty three, so we've been going on this for a year now. Every month we meet and Cassie has a new activity for us. You know, we talked about how public buildings are funded, how bonds work, how the finance and all that works. We did a tour of both campuses, we looked at the Nitty Gritty, we went down to the boiler room at the high school, we walked through the different classrooms, got a good look for everything. Right now we're in December second of twenty twenty four. Just last week, this committee actually made a proposal to the board for what option that we're going to go with. We were trying to get to you guys before we had that meeting, but I believe you decided to reschedule the meeting.
Yeah.
So, next. Okay, community feedback, so. I heard, is there a next slide, let's, let's next one, talk more about it, I wish you straight, yeah, okay. I went to the Brownsville City Council to do the same thing that I'm doing here tonight. Then after that meeting, I sat down with a couple extra people that have a lot of questions, spent a bunch of time with that. We published a bunch of information in the Brownsville Times, an article monthly published in the Halsey Happenings. I personally sat down with the Polyanna Club and did the same presentation and talked about the ins and outs of this whole process, parent score notifications, yeah, that's a lot of better outreach. Next. Okay, so survey results, I'm talking this, you want me to?
So a little disappointed, we got fifty two responses.
We said a lot, I found we were hoping to get like a couple hundred because there's like almost three thousand people in the body, and this is fifty two.
So it's, it's, we dug through this, there's multiple slides, different ways that the data was broken out, but it's, it's tough because fifty two responses is far from scientific.
So, let's go to the next one. General themes. The general, yeah, this is actually pretty good, so in the past, we struggled with, you know, communicating the state of the buildings. Do they need to be repaired? There's a lot of people saying, oh, this building's just fine, expect them to keep going. This time around, there was a good response in the sense that people understand that something needs to happen. We're kind of at the, buildings are basically expired, they've lived their, their life and it's, it's, it's time to make some major improvements to them. There was a lot of concerns about past decisions made by the school district and educational approach. There was concerns about past building maintenance and a lot of concerns about taxes and the economy. Next. Let's see what it's just about. Okay, so this one was fifty percent were very likely or likely to vote for it. There was about six percent that was neutral, forty percent said unlikely or very unlikely, and three percent said I can't vote. So basically, we're pretty split right now as far as, you know, whether or not this would pass at the moment, so, next.
We, so the, the committee came up with three different proposals, as you can see here, foundation, heritage and legacy, and they're broken down cost, and it's essentially different levels of repair, different costs other than the last two. The first one being basically kind of a Band-Aid, polish a few things, fix a couple of things, but keep us rolling, and down to pretty serious remodel at the high school and some work at the elementary school, which brought up the, the question of, well, if we're going to spend that much on a remodel, how much does it cost to rebuild? And it's not a complete rebuild, the, but the, in the legacy proposal, the domes would stay, which we'll get into more later, but as you see, the costs are almost identical to replace the instructional space at the two, at the high school campus.
The, the foundation one, that, so the lion's share of a lot of this is utilities. It's electrical, it's in the gym, that's transformers down in the basement and, or actually the transformers upstairs, upstairs at gym level, and then all of the electrical equipment is down below that. We have water problems, we have, probably have H-back problems or the lack thereof. So that's the lion's share of it on the foundation. The heritage and legacy, they built, they had that same initial infrastructure update plus remodeling or replacement of buildings. The legacy proposal, it was based on the same square footage that would be taken away, that would be the same square footage and new put up, and the concept is like a steel building where it's supported along the outside and it's open, you can easily, you know, classrooms on the inside. So the other thing on this, the pie chart, it's showing thirty percent, thirty seven percent are no, thirteen percent are for heritage, which was the major remodel, and thirteen percent for the foundation. So that meant a lot of thirty seven for the legacy, so it's either no or the legacy is kind of what this data is showing.
So this is a floor plan of the legacy, I say floor plan, it's, it's a rendering. This is basically the dark, darker blue area would be new building, but this is really just a representation of square footage. I mean, that's, that's not a designed plan, it's, it's, to give us an idea, but you can see our new CTE building still there, and then the Cobra Dome and Cafeteria, those stay, and they, the, the two domes have to stay because we had gotten the seismic grant a couple of years ago that put new roofs on them, insulated, and upgraded the seismic ability of them, and we are required to keep them for ten years after that point.
And not only that, we actually want to keep them, not do we have to, we also want to keep them, so. The, how long was I going to say something about? Oh, the gray stuff down below, that's the, the wings that were there now, those are the classroom wings. So the idea of this is that the classroom wings, we would demolish those to make space for the new steel structure to build in. And that steel structure can relocate to be in offices, they could be cafeteria space, they could be really flexible, we could do a lot of different things with that. If you guys have questions, feel free to just jump in in time. Nice. So this is the legacy proposal, this is the recommendation by the, the committee to the board. So the total project is forty million dollars. However, there's an awesome grant which we're applying for, which is a six million dollar grant. So if we get that, they will match up to six million dollars, which would then make the bond thirty four million dollars. And we haven't decided yet, but it's highly unlikely that if we don't get that bond, that we'll actually go up, or if we don't get the grant, we won't, probably won't go for the, for the bond. We'll probably put it off to the next election cycle and bring a lot for the awesome grant. So that raises you about a dollar eighty eight or a thousand dollars of assessed value. The big thing to note about this, this is not your Zillow, don't look up your Zillow and multiply by that number. This is what's on your tax statement, it's assessed value and not the real market value, there's two values on your tax statement, it's the lower of the two.
Next. Some observations from the committee, see several pictures here from our facilities tours and some less than desirable things with our buildings. First one, there is a bond oversight committee, we had a fairly lengthy or multiple discussions about that, and there was a lot of feedback, word of mouth to different community members, from community members, that they would really like to see this, and that would be a committee set up before the election, if, if the board chooses to proceed, to have oversight over the dollars from the bond. One of the big questions is always, well, how do we know that's enough? What if we get three quarters done and we run out of money? So that group would be looking at the money and making sure that it's spent well.
Make sure it's spent right, there's no waste, there's no, you know, throwing money out the window kind of, that's the oversight, so make sure we get it done right.
And then the high school where those pictures were taken, that was, it opened a lot of eyes when the tours were given to the condition of the building.
So, yeah, so, so the legacy proposal is the best value, that was kind of the, the theme that was coming out of the conversations that we had. I had a couple of different conversations and it was with the Polyanna Club and a couple of members after the last city council meeting that, you know, you can spend a bunch of time and money remodeling and then you're stuck with the same layout, or you can spend the exact same amount of money and start fresh with a clean slate. So it was kind of the legacy was the best, bang for the buck, I guess, you know, to make sure that you're being, you know, good with your money and doing things right. So our last bond was nineteen ninety six, expired thirteen, thirteen years ago. Nineteen ninety six, we replaced the boiler at the high school, and it was two point four million dollars. And that boiler has been decommissioned because we can't get parts for it. We, last fall, we scrambled and sold a whole bunch of base splits and all the classrooms, so. Next. Yeah, yes, the awesome grants, must have, we applied for that, if we get it, then there's a, like, I know that we'll vote to go forward with the bond. If we don't get it, we'll probably wait until next election cycle.
In January.
Yeah. And then they want to understand the, the tax burden, the share of the tax burden. How many people are in Halsey, how many people are in Brownsville, so when you hear this number of thirty four million dollars, sounds like a time, and I, and my first thought is, how am I going to pay thirty four million dollars? And really, the reality is that there's a thirty, forty percent of it's Brownsville, twenty percent of it's Halsey, there's the railroad and all the utilities that go through Halsey, and there's the Bell Mill, or the, the Bell Mill, Brownsville, and then GBI here, that's, that's a huge tax base. We're going to, we're going to look at the real numbers, but last time we looked, it was around thirty to forty percent was like utilities, just from the utilities going through the valley, so.
To add a little bit to the tax base, that awesome grant is awarded two different ways to districts. The first way is needs based, which Central Inn does not qualify for because of our tax base. Central Inn has a, a large tax base for the size of the school because of the utilities, the mill, it's not the homes, it's the railroad and these people that are paying taxes, so the only way we can get it is on a lottery.
So, that's, hence, we'll probably add it, we will probably be adding it next fall, maybe. Cross the fingers, Mary, I'm going to the tree. Yeah, next. So we looked at the neighboring districts, we're one of the few that do not currently have a bond for the school district. Up there is the rates of what Albany's paying, Caravaggio's, fortunately Caravaggio's is in the county. Eugene, their neighboring district, Harrisburg, Jefferson, Levitt, you kind of see all of their bond rates, and they fall into that dollar fifty to two dollar range, and that's what we're proposing is at dollar eighty eight.
Next.
Okay, so December was supposed to the school, to the school board, and that was their recommendation. January, we hear about the awesome grant, whether or not we receive it, and then January eighth, we have a, a board meeting to decide if we're going to go for it or not. And then February today would be campaigning, so we probably set up a, a back group to, to do campaigning for them. Any questions?
Um, I don't remember what the category is, well, I understand that most of the improvements to the elementary school are covered over that like first category, but, um, so maybe that's why we didn't care about it much here, but you're telling us a little bit about the improvements to the elementary school that maybe some student into this recommended.
Yeah, absolutely, so we, so the committee was, you know, twenty people, and we toured both facilities, and then after that, we all talked about what's the conditions, like, okay, if you had a hundred dollars, how much that a hundred dollars would just kind of be grade school, and how much did you spend at the high school? And we, they basically determined that the majority of the need was at the high school, so they came up with a rough number of about seventy five percent, twenty five percent. So for the grade school, what we're talking about doing is, something that needs to have there is that the kitchen is only a warming facility, they can't actually cook meals over there, so we're looking at trying to upgrade the kit to full kitchens so they can cook. Upgrading the ADA access to all the doors, there's only one door that you can go in at that school if you're in a wheelchair. All the other doors are on the south side, all have steps. So, so we're looking to add ramps to all of those doors, updating the bathrooms, make it ADA accessible, replace some windows.
A lot of windows.
A lot of windows, I think there was something else here, some.
Bathroom, there's bathroom.
Yeah.
The bathroom.
Oh, and the kindergarten, yes, with the, so the kindergarten is currently in a separate building, which I believe was a shop building.
It used to be a rich shop and art class.
And there's no bathroom out there.
So they have to have, they have to have an adult escort them down the hall to the next bathroom because they're little, so they can't go down. So. So yeah, we, we want to add a bathroom up there for sure. Any other questions?
Not so much a question, but I am a member of the, the committee and the amount of work that's been done thus far and hard questions being asked and there was some somewhat tense conversations, but when we went out to the schools and saw the actual facilities, it's like, okay, yeah, we need to buckle down and do something. I think that the community needs to really take a hard look at that. I think that at the end of the day, helping our schools is a huge, huge benefit to not only Halsey but to Brownsville shed, and I think that it is a good, good thing to be looking at it.
Yeah, we have a lot of, there's a lot of good things happening out there, and it'd be nice to keep that bar on, keep it going, so.
Has the committee considered the inflation that'll occur between now and construction being started?
They have, actually, that was, we drilled pretty hard on those cost estimates because firstly, show us the estimate for a remodel, they had some good ideas on how to remodel, and then, you know, we sat there and stared at it, well, the rub's gone, you're tearing up concrete, you're doing all this stuff, basically you got beams left. So what would be the cost to do a, just tear it down and do a steel building? They came back with a number that was almost the same, and we were all like, yes. And so we drilled them for a couple of hours on what those costs were. And they did mention a cost roll up from inflation, that's also factored into that.
So I had the, the Winona, Winona group, this is what they do, they're, I mean, it's, is it all schools?
They primarily do schools, I might have done something else, but they work with the, uh, small rural school, school districts on, uh, trying to improve their facilities and past bonds.
My point being, and he talked about, shoot, I lost her name.
Cassie.
Cassie, who facilitated our meetings, the other name that was up there was Patrick, and he's basically like a, kind of a project manager, and he's been helping us with the CTE building, and he's done a great job, he's, he's very good at watching change orders, making sure that that needs to be done, that money needs to be spent. My point being that this is what they do for a living, and so their estimates are pretty realistic. They're watching costs.
This isn't the same, but this cost and probably a silly question because it's not always considered, but those estimates also took into consideration things like public works projects and requirement for bowling, prevailing rates, bonds and insurance and.
All of that super premium rates.
That's a lot of cost.
A lot of cost, that's the reason why the ticket's so high, it's like, you know, if we don't have a builder on us, it's like, you know, sixty percent of what a public project is, so.
I have so many questions, I don't even know where to start for sure, but I'll just start with two that, that are a real dichotomy in some ways, that in, on the one hand, I don't understand how the school got into this kind of shape, and on the other hand, having lived in this school district for over forty years, this, the buildings are not the problem, as bad as they are, the buildings are not the problem. The, the district has a horrible reputation for not educating kids and the culture is abysmal. Grandson went to school here for one year, he would live in Pocatello in a much bigger school, and he said after like a month, he couldn't wait to get out of here. He didn't even go to school and he was already being propositioned by girls, and that's it just, it just makes you wonder about the culture, he couldn't wait to get away from the kind of culture that's out there.
When was this, this recent or?
Two years ago. But like I said, the, the buildings are not the problem, as bad as they are, they are not the problem.
I wouldn't say definitely a problem.
Well, I'll give you an example, this, this, what, I'm just, I've been meaning to say this to the school board, since you're here. What you have is you have generations, literally generations of mistrust you have to rebuild. My kids went to school almost forty years ago, and even then, we heard nothing good about this school district. My kids homeschooled for a couple of years and we finally, we put them into Central Inn for one year. My daughter went into first grade, she was reading, tested at reading in a one grade, one year plus. When she finished first grade at Central Inn, she was fitting, reading at a kindergarten level. When she finished first grade at Central Inn, she was fitting a, reading at a kindergarten level. That doesn't really bode well, in my opinion, for a, a school district. That's not the building's problem. And it's just, it just, I've just heard nothing but horrible things. Parents that have tried to talk to the administration, they get uh, threatened to be arrested soon. They ask for accountability. There's none. They just, it, it's just, it just looks like a big scam.
So I can talk to you a couple of things that's changed recently. Uh, last year, we, it was last year, year before last, we adopted a new labor charts curriculum to unify the program, other from K until twelve. And then this last year, we spent a long time looking at our, uh, hours in class. And we decided to go to a full day at school so we could get more time in class because we knew that our grades, we're at the bottom ten percent educational wise. So that was a big conversation that we spent on last year, talking about is how do we get back to get our education back in square. Uh, the schedule has been adopted in this first term back with the new schedule has been pretty rocky. This next semester, we're going to make a couple of improvements to that schedule. And that the, the teachers union and the administration is going to propose a new schedule to us if they wanted to, to bring forth. But we're about to have five days because we can't get enough seat time for the curriculum that we have. Uh, those are two examples of things that we are trying to do to rectify that reputation. And I know, I went to school higher too, uh, born and raised here as my, myself. So we, we, we understand that's a problem and we're trying to, trying to do better by that. Uh, the other big thing is that, uh, the buildings have been neglected for decades. I'm sure you guys all know about that. Uh, we just, uh, three years ago, did the five hundred thousand dollar maintenance reserve fund. We decided to take five hundred thousand dollars out of our general fund and allocate it towards facilities just because they're in such disrepair. Um.
How'd they get there? How they getting such a disrepair?
Uh, I don't know. It's kind of a problem that we've inherited, but the we spent a lot of time, uh, so the, the general, generally speaking, the school budget that we received from the state is for, uh, operations. So it's staff, your utility bills and consumable goods. That money that we get from the state is not allocated for buildings. They don't give us enough for the amount of students that we have and for the maintenance of the buildings. And we, the, I say we, the district is always trying to offer more, uh, opportunity, different types of classes and experiences and things like that. They focus more on the classroom stuff and less on the buildings. Um, I don't want to drag dirt through the conversation, but the administration in the past did not do well for the, the facilities. The new administrator that we have, first thing she did was our landscaping. She hired, uh, James, which is a maintenance, uh, facilities guy. He's now teaching woodshop class at the C T U building for our kids. Uh, it's been a huge turnaround and just the parents, the, the, their grounds have kept up or kept up now. All the lights out front are working. Um, this was leading to earlier, the, the good things were starting to turn around. They're trying to keep this momentum going. You know, we have a new, uh, baseball field and the softball field and the track. Uh, the, uh, parent teacher P T C group, they, they got the fence going for us. Um, so it's just, those are the things that are, that are changing that I'm hoping that helps mend that problem that's, that history that we've had.
What I would add on the facilities is some of it's just age related. Uh, you talked about the boiler being decommissioned. When the boiler was still operating, all of the steam and condensate return lines are all underground in tunnels, concrete tunnels that don't, are not sealed. That we have a huge amount of water intrusion, which then becomes the city's problem because it all gets pumped here as part of our sewer discharge. Uh, and we were struggling to find anybody to even work on them when the boiler was operating. Nobody wanted to go in those tunnels because it wasn't safe.
Yeah.
Uh, the C T.
Those pipes were rotten, they're copper pipes and they're, you can replace twenty feet and the next twenty feet will leak again.
Uh, exactly. The C T E building, which we just demolished to build the new one, was a brick building on a concrete slab that we found out after it was torn down and was built on river rock.
Okay, here's, here's one of the problems. Um, I, I, I will say I'm very encouraged by the new administration. And I've only managed to get to one school board meeting and I'm very, very encouraged by it. Uh, but there's a problem. When you have a, when you have a, a break of trust, it, you have to see some, people have seen some proof, some kind of proof. And, uh, you know, not just lipstick on a pig. It, it can't be like, uh, you know, we see a lot of, uh, big, impressive, very visible public works projects in an election year because people running for office, I want you to know that this is your, that's dollars going to work. And then as soon as elections over, then all sudden those things all die away. We, we as taxpayers, I believe, need to see a longer term. It's gonna, I think it's gonna take more than just good intentions and promises to, to rebuild trust, which I would love to see the district do. I think it's a long-term problem. We've been, like I said, you've been fighting this for literally generations.
I'm curious to hear you say that, you know, you're, you do think that we're moving in the right direction.
Yeah, I think you are. I do. But, but it's, it's not just going to be fixed by promises and a couple im- improvements. It's gonna have to show some long-term stick to it.
Yeah.
I think if you leave that building there, you won't have long term. I think what is it? If you have an earthquake of point or four, it's on, it's all down. There's zero survivability. Uh, that's a huge issue. Uh, you go into the, uh, uh, electrical room there, that's a bomb we can have. I don't know that building that. What is there, three on the road there?
Yeah, the three transformers are, uh, god, they've been firing.
Giant cars sticking out.
They, they built that building in nineteen fifty eight and it was a poor design to begin with. It should have never been put in there. So, uh, you know, that was maybe a thirty year building. You know, uh, the maintenance of it has been shot and worn. And I mean, that, that building was in disrepair twenty five years ago. Uh, and it's fine to come. Uh, I do look at some of the projects that have been done there. You look at the ball fields, you look at the track. Uh, I think cost of district and dime, that's all volunteer and donated. Uh, they just got another grant for safety measures for gates and cameras. Um, that was supposed to five hundred thousand dollars. So there, there's a qualitative improvement there. Our C T U buildings, that was huge. So if we look at, we're gonna wait another, you know, fifty, sixty years, that building won't be there. Now that building would be lucky to stand in fifteen, I guess. Um, there's rotten wood out there. Um, you know, the topic of the safety concerns already, you know, there have been intrusions on the campus. It's huge that we finally got that five hundred thousand dollars. And, but I do understand the trust issue. I've been a resident of this community for thirty three years. And I've never understood why that school was in the shape it's been. Never understood that. When you can go down the road nine miles and that school was built in nineteen seventy four and it's still in pristine shape. I don't get that. But I think the board now and the administration now is different than we've had quite some time. And I think there's some accountability there. That's just what I see. And, and, and I'm a former board member, so I want to throw that out there. So I'm in the know of what they're talking about. But the, the, the school, I, I recommend if anybody has any questions, take the tour.
Yes.
It's, it's absolutely the total.
Going as you're going to put out on the TV, uh, some of the biggest things that I discovered, I went to high school there. And as a kid, I went through, it was just whatever, it was a classroom I go to. I went back and walked through those classrooms as an adult and I was floored because as an adult, your job is to make sure that these kids stay in this classroom educated. The classrooms have like four doors on them and kids will come through your classrooms, go to the next classroom, to go down to the bathroom because it's too cold outside. There's too many cubby holes for kids to hide in and, and, uh, skip class and things of that nature. The other thing I didn't know, and this kind of blew my mind, we have a kitchen at the high school for cooking. Our dry storage is down at the end of the hall and wide. We have cold storage down the end of the hall and outside in the cooler. And then all our dishes are washed near a different location. They're on the other side of the cafeteria. So imagine your house, if you had dry storage, cold storage, dishwashing and cooking, four separate locations in your house. Like the inefficiencies, the poor layout for, uh, monitoring kids, uh, for safety and keeping them in class and keeping them, you know, not distracting and on task. Uh, that was one of the biggest things that jumped out that I didn't realize the first few times I went out of the block.
Yeah, to add on, um, the layout and the cubby holes, it's, it requires an enormous amount of time from our administration just monitoring kids because there's so many places for them to go and hide when they could be working on other things like education.
Yeah. I understand what you're saying though, too. Um, how did it get in this spate of disrepair? And it is some, like you said, past administration. And I think that that's the biggest thing that they have heard. And one reason why they've hired the Winnebago group is to be able to present it and bring it back in a different light and try to, and they're doing this over a long period. It's not just like hurry up and get it done as it had been in the previous times. Um, but they're trying to really engage with the community, trying fifty two responses doesn't really help, but engage with the community and to hear some of the concerns and stuff. And trying to get more involvement and let people know.
I, I think to, to make a little more relatable council, the issues that they have are similar to the issues that we have with our infrastructure. Since that the cans were kicked down the road for a great many years. And so now we are coming on us exit to make it right the best we can and move forward. And when things are put in sixty years ago plus, the mentality was, here we put this in, it's good now. With no thought of, we have to maintain this for given amount of time. And I think the school district, I'm creating my wrong, probably ran into that same situation. Plus the fact that they didn't have the dollars to push towards it. And so just like us, we don't necessarily have the dollars to put towards our infrastructure problem. We're trying to do the best we can. So I think we're all, um.
We're gonna go, I'm predicting it to you, like we know that the maintenance is so bad. And then, so then we just remade the conscious decision to set aside five hundred thousand dollars out of general fund to pay for facilities. Five hundred thousand dollars just sounds like a chunk of change. That's seven teachers. Right? So we made the conscious decision that we now have to decide between staff and building. So that's a decision that we made in the last two, three years ago. Uh, if there's long basins, we'll still have a maintenance reserve fund. We're gonna chop it back a little bit so we can focus back on the teachers and keep the staff going. And keep the, bring the education up. The goal is that we have a highly educated group of kids to manage this district.
Can I make an audacious suggestion?
Yes, please.
Obviously you didn't get a great response on your survey. Could I ask the school board to consider possibly going toward a door?
We try that. We could, uh, we probably will definitely during the campaign.
I'm sure you'll get more than fifty two responses.
Yeah.
I get a door in your face, but that's a response.
Yeah. You ever get the survey?
We discussed here on the council how the survey was actually a little incognito. It seemed that it was not clear. Most people thought they were getting another ad.
A postcard that went out.
You had parents square. It was helpful, but for all the families that don't have kids in school, none of my neighbors heard about it because I'm, all my neighbors are for the most part retired and they don't have kids or grandkids.
Yeah, I live same, I don't sit there for the polyagric. Near about how to get to it, I was trying to get to it. Um.
But just like we deal with that with council too.
Right.
You can, you can give so much information out there, so many opportunities over and over and in different ways, different deliveries, everything, and you get zero. I mean, it's. Yeah, it goes to everybody. There's no reason anybody should not have known about it.
To any point that I was, we know and understand that we have a huge, uh, outreach uh, obstacle that we have to, you know, overcome in the next couple of months if we decide to do this. We have to get, get out there and campaign a lot harder. Uh, for sure.
Um, I want to give one last couple of questions. If anybody feels like they need an opportunity, if they want to.
Keep it as rolling.
There is one.
Yep.
Uh, I think that's part of your thoughts.
Yeah, you, we're, you can, or you can, you're on the district website, there's an at board email address on there. You can get us that way. We're happy to answer questions. If you want to come for tours or whatever, more questions about you know, the volume words or anything else, like we're open. So please reach out. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we're going to move forward to the Central Inn Community Foundation.
Channel with Robert, so you should probably remember. Yes, here's my annual, now. Uh, and I know you've got the letter in your packets and stuff, so if I just, if you have any questions. For those of you in the audience, uh, school explanation, Central Inn Community Foundation. We've raised funds and gave out grants to nonprofits in the Central Inn School District area. And last year, we gave a grant to Central Inn Elementary School Parent Teacher Club, their advisors. Is a rec center for their sports, uh, perhaps a garden club, sharing hands, Calipari Food Alliance, Central Inn Gleaners, Central Inn High School for their soccer program. And the Central Valley Church Youth Group, and we gave out a total of eight thousand. So, uh, anything necessary? Any questions you have?
Thank you.
Um, I'll give it to council. We only have one item of new business and then we have a resolution, but if council wanted to jump to new business before our council reports, that means where the donation request.
Sure.
Let's, let's do that.
I move that the governing, oh, wait, wait, wait. That's the general election.
Well, I know, we, uh, the request is for five hundred dollars.
Right.
Um, channel with already described the uses for that money and I know that's organization will give new information for council. But just a little extra information is that we, uh, have twelve hundred budgeted in our donations uh, for this, this year, and we have not donated to any organizations yet, so we currently still have five hundred dollars to be.
Okay.
Donate the maximum amount of the year allowed to give to a single organization this time.
Entertained the motion.
I move that the governing body of the city of Halsey approve a community partners donation in the amount of five hundred dollars to Central Inn Community Foundation.
Second.
All clear, ma'am?
Fine.
Close. Question carries. You're welcome. Thank you for all you do. Okay. Cramping my ears, so it's probably stupid and busy. Restrict ordinance and resolutions. Restrict the ordinance and resolution.
Uh, do we want to go ahead and do that now or go back for?
Yeah, let's, let's get the ordinance resolutions done.
Perfect.
Okay, so council's asked to certify the results for the November fifth twenty twenty-four general election in Halsey. Certified election results have been received from Lynn County. You said, see attached registered. The twenty twenty-four election results details.
The final page in the packet is our election results, um, for the office of community city of policy. Uh, the legislature has been elected with ninety-five percent of the votes. Um, there's information there in regards to our undervotes, which is the amount of people who cannot vote. Uh, but were registered, um, voters out of our district. And uh, for the office of city council member, we have several. So we have three positions becoming vacant. First up, we have uh Councilor Strauss, who's being reelected into her position with sixty-five percent votes. Um, and then the next up, uh, who was elected by riding, we have Halla Pump, who is not present today. Uh, elected with fifty-two votes or eleven percent. And then the next uh winner of the election is John Miller, who is present today. Uh, with fifty-one votes and again eleven point five three percent.
Entertained a motion.
I moved that the governing body of the city Halsey adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash seven four one. A resolution of the city of Halsey certified the election results for the November fifth twenty twenty-four general election.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
opposed? Question carries.
Congratulations, Twyla.
Okay, so now let's cruise on back to uh. Citizen comments. Um, citizens, interested citizens and anyone in the audience who's addressed council, I can look for sure.
Yeah, she is hiding back.
Yeah, okay. So hearing that, buddy, one once, one twice, moving on. Next is reports of council, and we'll start with the city minister report.
Oh, so the topic of conversation as per new quote is well updates. Um, I am submitting funding for uh EPA riding community needs grant for a request of eighty-five thousand dollars. Um, I, the submission deadline is this Friday. It's well on its way, just chipping away at it. We were successful in getting letters of support from both the school district and the fire district. Um, as the city policy is. Either their primary or the only source of water, uh, which is important for both. Having kids in school and fighting fires. Um, so they, they had some pretty good letters of support for us. Um, other things that in regards to funding efforts. Is I met with our federal senators, their staffers, um, to discuss. What is Senate earmarks, which is something that they have been doing these eight years at the federal level. In regards to putting um like directed money into bills towards communities, happens at the state level. Uh, level as well. Um, we had a really, really good meeting with their office. Um, they have sent me the twenty twenty-four guidelines, which are. Not necessarily totally up to date for what the expectations will be in the coming year, but are probably the baseline. So I've been reviewing those to make sure that I'm like really prepared for. Uh, the application process. Uh, we will have the twenty twenty-five guidelines. Um, before the end of this month is when they're, they're expected to come out. Um, and then the application date generally lands. In late January and is open for kind of a short amount of time. Uh, sometimes it's only open for a couple of weeks, sometimes it's a month. So having that opportunity to meet with them, to get an idea of the kind of funding asks that tend to be selected. Um, and sort of like our, our chances, for lack of a better word, uh. Nothing's guaranteed, but the amount that we need and the type of ask that it is, is a favorable one. So it's one of those things that. It sounds silly to say because we need at least four hundred thousand dollars, right? It's not a small amount of money. Um, and and more than that, if you want to do the approved controls at our water treatment plant, which probably eventually we're going to need anyways. Um, we can do a project that doesn't include those and be operational, but ultimately we'll, we'll knock around that door soon enough anyhow. Um, but the ask from a federal perspective is on like the smaller end. So because it looks good for senators to be able to put along the projects and. Amount that they're wanting to use earmarks. Our amount is a favorable amount for that regard because they can kind of like help a lot of communities when you have three, four communities that cover these under a million requests. So we're positioned well to jump on that opportunity to put our ask out and more to come. Um, the grant that I'm writing to backtrack a little bit is um going to be announced in March. So we'll know pretty quickly if we are selected or not. Um. Federal money comes with a lot of hoops to jump through, really like free money, so we'll do it. Uh, I received updated quotes regarding loan amounts. Again, this is our least preferred method, but it's important for us to be informed of what that would look like for our community's debt loans. And what that would look like for rate pairs, because that's ultimately to bear the brand of paying that cost. Um, and so we asked for scenarios for either two hundred thousand or the four hundred fifty, which were, which is like to fully finish the project. Through business organ, through a special state's infrastructure. Um, and. At the two hundred thousand rate, it looks like an increase to a rate is just like two dollars and thirty cents a month, and that's for a thirty-year. Um, payday term. So that's a long time. To be paying on something like that. Uh, if we do have to take out any loans, it's certainly something we would have to discuss. Is where do we find the balance of. Putting that for low rate pairs versus for how long and what's the value? To the city and what we think that community members would prefer, can afford, et cetera. Obviously, uh, if we needed four hundred and fifty, that goes up. So that's good information to have. We are still kicking down every door that looks like Monte Carlo. Um, but we are calling phase one, which is well construction. That's the portion that is funded. Um, and that's the drilling the well, lining the well, installing a pump. It does not include operationalization, which is the money that we're still seeking. That is back at big phase. We currently. Uh, bid ends Thursday. And so it is competitive bid. There's a closed bid process, so I don't have any idea of what they're coming in at before opening bids on Thursday. And so I will follow up with council on one of those little fun updates. When I get the numbers. Um, so we're just like for successful bid phase that we can kick that project off once. That. Bid opening happens and we select a contractor, we have to allow a week for people to um. Like to contest if they think that we can choose the right vendor. They have an opportunity to sort of appeal or ask first to like prove why that was more a choice. Um, so you can, you know, barring any complications from an appeal, we uh. Will, we hope to be signing contracts before the end of December. We will be signing contracts. Um, and then that project is slotted to be happening uh early twenty twenty-five. So we will.
When does it have to be completed by?
So that has to be completed, but the documents require completion date of June first. Because the funding source that we have for that um requires us to complete all money spent before June thirtieth. And so we didn't want to be in a situation where we were like trying to get our final bills out, make sure that there's no like. Final punch list items or anything down to the wire. Um, and as part of all the feedback that I've gotten from. From folks is that this portion, this phase one is absolutely feasible done in five months. So I mean, frankly, once it starts, it should be like a two-month project, but five months is a good offer. Uh, next up, City Day at the Capitol is January twenty-eighth. So City Day is Linkburg in Cities. It's a hosted event by them. Some of you have probably heard of City Day already, but in case you haven't, I know Council Gilson has probably heard of City Day. Um, so it's an opportunity for our elected officials and, and you know, my city staff to go up to Salem. And um meet with our. Uh, representatives, our legislators, advocate for working with the interests. It is something that is, um, I very, very, very much encourage anybody who's able to go. It is a whole day event. We will be there, twenty-two evening, and there's actually like an evening. Uh, reception or something as well, for those who want to stay, but it's highly encouraged. I've been working with other cities on. A number of like projects of interest. That we want to advocate for, and so we're all, you know, Sadio, Brownsville, we're all trying to, we're trying to make sure that we can bring a pretty uh. Full roster to the best of our ability to advocate for ourselves. Um, let me know if you want to go by the next council meeting, so that I can register you. Oh, and this is December eighteenth. If, if the sooner the better, because I don't know if there's things that fill up, like meetings with legislators, you have to select meetings with legislators. Um, so we want to make sure we get a time slot, but at the latest, we're doing.
I would like to go to that. I will just aim in there.
Okay.
I have not been in the past, but I've heard that it's awesome.
Yeah, so. What's up?
I'm going to get.
Me too.
Me and Jerry both going. Um, and if anybody doesn't go right after that and wants to get back to me, that's fine. Another thing for elected officials, and that is the elected officials training. They do this um in a series of trainings. It is free. It is in person. Um, I've heard really positive things from counselors and fairs and other elected officials who attend it. And it is another all-day thing. There was one in Lebanon. If you missed it, there's like a catch-all. Uh, one's if I'm very good. So there's still an opportunity, and that one's in Salem, so that's not too far for most folks. Um, from here. So there's a lot of other ones happening all across the state, but I figured maybe Pendleton was a bit too far. For people to go over that line this time of year. I don't know. If you really, really want to go.
I said, that's the one that I was saying last time, last council meeting, that is, it's an awesome training, even I've done this for. Um, leaving now six years now or whatever, and I want to go to it again. I was not able to attend the one in Lebanon, but I plan on going to this one again.
Just in case, but. And so I realized after like right down the wire, I was like, oh, I did not communicate that super well.
Yeah, no, I, I had planned on it, but was not able to, but I will go to this one.
But again, it's free, so.
Yeah.
We didn't want to see anybody by missing out on that one. So Michelle will go to that one again. And again, anybody else, if you want to go, uh, I just need to know by next council meeting. Um, upcoming events, uh, obviously our staff and council Christmas dinner is next Saturday. Um, at five o'clock and City Hall is scheduled the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth. For observance of Christmas and January first in observance of New Year's Day. Any questions? I always forget to ask that. Do you have any questions about any of those things?
I have a question, not about that though, but.
Okay.
A quick update on the taking the demoing the tower.
Yeah.
We heard anything? I thought it was supposed to be done.
I know it's a pile.
Uh, yeah. Yeah.
I would like to see an official letter and say thank you for destroying our landmark and turning it into a.
Yes.
Because they asked for a special, you know, exceptions from us. Because they had to get it done so quickly and we weren't going to change the hours and.
Looks like about a hundred percent worse.
Right.
Yeah, and.
No movement over there for quite some time now.
Right.
It's. It's not reasonable. I understand it's private property, but there are a lot of things that are considered to be. To be rubbish, to be according to our ordinances, to be hazard, to be a number of things, right? Um, that can't be the long-term.
Right.
Well, and I just, like I said, I look at that he was asking us to make exceptions because he was going to be charged like, what was it, two thousand dollars a day if it went over?
Yeah.
Certain amount of time. Well, it's been like triple that time down.
Right. It's like he got through the demo and then decided to pause on this.
Right.
This too, right?
Yeah.
Which is the actually getting the materials out of there.
Right.
Yes, it is, um.
I just didn't know if you'd heard from him or anything.
He didn't communicate with us that the chipping and all that was, or the shredding was gonna.
No, he didn't also. His, his chipping was approved for ten days, but that doesn't mean that until the end of time, whenever he wants to.
Right, right. Whatever ten days he chooses.
Right, and so at this point, he would not be able, he had like sort of a. A framework of like a month to complete the project overall. And so this time, he would have to come back to them again. So as far, as far as I'm concerned, I think.
I would think so.
Right, he wants to know, it's okay, council agrees.
Yeah, yeah.
So about the chipping issue. I don't think they did a whole lot of chipping, did they?
I don't think they did it at all. I think that they.
None?
No, I don't think so.
I know they had a machine there and I thought I heard something for a couple of days, but it wasn't, obviously it's not all gone.
But it must have paused. They must have just stopped, obviously, right?
Yeah.
The chipper's still sitting there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
That's fair.
Just curious.
No, absolutely.
That was a good one to bring up.
I'm also curious. Oh, I'm sorry. I have one thing to add. And it's not on this. Um, and, and we will have more time to talk about this at our chair to some of our, but we have two departed officers. So we have elected a couple of new votes, um, including Councilor Flores. This will be his last meeting with us. So I wanted to take a minute to. Thank you for the time you've served here on City Council. Um.
Welcome.
We're sorry to see you go, but it's always, uh, you know, we'll get new people and we'll get new voices. Um, they'll be a stranger.
And if you decide in future you want to come back, we have precedent of that happening and it's okay. We'll let you back.
Yeah.
Even seen. Okay, so we're gonna move on here and get to the public works department, Andy.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Perfect. For the month of November. Um, we've been having some issues at the water plant. I call it glitches. Um, I talked about this back in uh August, I believe. Is that when the generator runs, they're further forest exercise. Uh, every Tuesday, it affects the. Our distribution pump and it also affects our variable frequency drive. Uh, we had a gentleman come out and look at some settings and that. Um, it has been looked at, but it has not been fixed a hundred percent. We still go out there. It's not consistent. Sometimes we'll go out there uh during Tuesday and watch everything. Sometimes it uh, it does its funky thing and sometimes it doesn't. And so we're still looking into it. Uh, we watched it today. And uh, it didn't do it when the um. Uh, generator came on. But then when the generator power switched back to normal power, it did its little funky thing. And so. Uh, me and Billy were talking about how uh, some other things that could be possibly causing this. So. We're still uh, we're still working on that progress on it, but it's not affecting anything. What we don't like to see is. When it switches off and goes onto a high service pump, then it jumps our pressure in the system. Up higher than what our normal system is. So that's our main concern. Uh, when we installed the um new well. Uh, the new well pump in ninety, uh, well ninety-eight here lately, um, we noticed a difference in the level. And at the time, we were like, okay, hey, we got the pump in there. We, we uh didn't disrupt any. Any of our um community with water. Um, we're back online. We're good. So we had big rains came up uh, uh, earlier this month. And we've seen a negative number in our display that's on our um level transducer. So we did some research and uh was able to. Um, Jones well drilling came by and they did a. So we did some research and, uh, was able to, um, Jones Well Drilling came by, and they did a, um, they have a probe that they put down in the well, tells us what our static, uh, level is and what our drawdown is. Um, with that data that we had, we was able to adjust, um, to get the negative number out. With that being said, in the PLC, there's a setting in there. If it draws down past fifty-five feet, then it will shut the pump off. So, um, tag, um, automated system came out and had, got into our PLC, was able to adjust some of those, um, settings, and everything has been working as it should, which is a good thing.
Yes.
Uh, and so, uh, our discharge season has, uh, arrived. We've, uh, our ponds were full, and we, uh, rebuild a bunch of our components that are involved with, uh, getting that in operational. Um, since, uh, I wrote this report, we have, we are up and running and, uh, have no problems at this point.
Excellent, excellent.
Any questions?
Nope. Well, thank you very much, Andy.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
And the next item on the agenda is the library report, Jen.
She is not. I don't think she's involved. Okay, I'll follow.
Yeah, we'll circle back to her. Uh, next item is a mayor's report. Last month was kind of lean for me for meetings. I had a couple, I mean, one, he's a, he's a bond advisory committee, um, had some medical stuff going on, so I didn't get to as many meetings as I was hoping to get to. Um, so not a lot to report for last month. Then we'll kick over to Michelle.
I don't really have anything to report either, so I'm going to have Ms. Jocelyn. We all remember Jocelyn came to our council meeting last year with an ask.
The camera, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Actually, I've been about that recently.
My name is Jocelyn. I'm a senior at Centralin High School, and I last around six months ago came to ask for a donation for a camera, and we have received a camera a little less than a month ago, and we wanted to thank you, well, I wanted to thank you and the yearbook classroom personally. Um, we are in training with the new camera with new students. We are trying to get, um, younger kids to take pictures at games. Currently, right now, there's a basketball game, so they are taking pictures while I'm here. So, um, we just wanted to thank you guys. I mean, yeah, thank you guys for all the help. Um, it means a lot, and I know it's gonna create, um, a good outcome for the future for younger kids. And as, you being a senior, I know it's gonna be good for the school, so.
Well, thank you much, I'm glad you're liking it.
Thank you for sticking with it.
Of course.
Got it. Woo-hoo.
Send me Brownsville. And back to Jen.
I texted her, I kept on making a quick phone call.
Okay. We're gonna pause for a moment.
Like all out of sort now.
There is no
How many technical difficulties before, oh, that was weird. So I'll just go really quickly because this is my last, and I'll check in later tomorrow, make sure. Um, so this month, we had, um, some circulation. Uh, we had, let's see, how many was there?
Seventy-three, first line.
Thank you. Seventy-three, oh, it's the first line we asked, we had seventy-three patrons, um, and some for them being car holders. Uh, it was a quiet month with holidays coming up, um, and with the Native American Heritage Month, uh, Jen did display a lot of books, uh, so, you know, fiction and nonfiction, children's books, just a lot of different stuff. She had a, like, on every, um, bookcase on the tops, across the mantle, everywhere for Native American Heritage Month. Um, and then she was also working on, uh, the second year cataloging. Some other things that were done this month is we did the library float, and so in the holiday at night parade, and that included Gabriel and Stacy, um, they came in, Stacy's daughter, Aria, and, uh, who I guess was incredibly excited to be on the float.
It sure is.
Um, and so Aunt Aria was there, but we, uh, we did participate. We did our civic duty. It was very, very decorated, very lit up. We, uh, invested in an inflatable polar bear reading 'Twas the Night Before Christmas, um, because that's something that we can reuse on the float every year. Uh, Jen and, uh, just glad that came and helped, and they decorated the float on Saturday. And, yeah, just looking forward to our events. We have also had, uh, a library committee meeting, and we set a regular schedule to meet monthly. Um, and our, we, we have, uh, set a tentative date, a pretty set date for the 5K. Um, discussed some other ideas for their, uh, smaller, mid-year kind of fundraising ideas instead of just doing like all 5K or nothing. And our next meeting is December 19th, where we will really begin to start like doing some task assigning and setting goals for kicking off the fundraiser season, because it happened so, so fast. Uh, anything to add from our two library community members?
Uh, thank your husband for driving for us, and then, uh, Billia and Tina and their kids that came and helped out too.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, that's right. Thank you.
Yeah.
They always come help out.
Whenever you get bigger and bigger, I, I love seeing that.
Oh, my gosh, it was amazing.
I was just, I was gonna add a little plug there to the parade. It was fun. I mean, we were there, and Larissa and her family was there too, and it was awesome to be able to see. It's like the last, previous year, you'd go and you'd lap around, but you couldn't see anybody. But this year, it's like, we were like all the way down and around, and you could look across the street, and there were still floats going. It was awesome, and how many people were out watching it too.
There was a few less people this year than last year, but we also were on the same night as Harrisburg's parade.
Yeah.
So I know a lot of people were up in Harrisburg to with family.
Yeah, the same night as Harrisburg's.
We made it to that one too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, because I heard, I chose not to ride on the library float. I did not feel like I wanted to bounce around on a trailer.
Hmm.
So I got to be a captive audience member, and it was a fantastic show. I enjoyed it so much. I've been coming since I moved here, and I think the first year I came in 2016, and I, I, maybe I'm remembering it smaller, but I think maybe there was five loads. It was incredibly small. It was over as soon as it started, and this was just so impressive. It's every year, I was, it was really fun.
You send thanks to the tangent group, because I know people really liked the combine.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think they had three.
Because they were the trailer too, I think.
Yeah, they had a combine, a trailer, and then another one with them, so they brought three big floats that people really liked because they had the combine completely lit up.
Yeah, it was cool, and they did a good job.
Christmas for those two.
Yeah.
And they did the tangent heart box.
Yeah.
So.
Um, it's good to have allies in our little, small neighborhoods, communities. Halsey went and did their Harvest Festival parade, and he said they can come to our parade, and I, yeah, they made it.
They did, yeah. They, uh, they had their banner, it's the only reason why.
We should really install the library banner, some incorporate the library.
We talked about it when we were on the float, about trying to get something.
We love it.
It helped a little bit this year with like the bear with the book, because it was lit up, but
Yeah.
I remember to tell the last two groups to go to the library.
Yeah.
You yelled at us. We were
I actually did it.
You would have had to yell over Ari.
So we made the parade, so we just get to be participants, which is kind of nice.
Yeah.
But, um,
Travis was pretty overwhelmed this year though.
Yeah.
What he was, when he came up to us, he would, he came up and talked to Tony night, and he was like, wow, he goes, I don't know where to put everybody. This is, this is, this is incredible. Yeah, he was pretty
I just think it would be nice if, one of the problems that we noticed, we went to it is, it's not real clearly marked where the park or where the route even
Right.
It, it would be nice that was marked and, and people had some idea what time it's gonna start and
Yeah, I know that they do Facebook, and on their Facebook page, they put the start time, but they don't, they put, I think, on there that it's on these certain streets, but I find it helpful for parades if they actually do like little map, like highlight
Yeah.
the route.
Put out, put out signs the week before
Yeah.
on, on
I think that, like I said, I think that this year, growing so much, that there's gonna be some things done differently, kind of. So, yeah.
Yeah.
It was good though, yeah.
Now they ran out of room to park floats, they were parked down 99.
Yeah.
Yeah, I couldn't either, I had to go
Come on, we made room for you.
It doesn't have reverse, so it was
Made room for you.
They're gonna have to start staging on C Street
Mm-hmm.
and take that over too. I had the same thought when I was making my leap back to the city shop. I saw how many people were staging, and I was like, they're gonna have to stage somewhere else, I'm sure. They're not gonna be around. Because I was gonna go over there so that people could come in while you guys were staging, and I saw the traffic, and I said, never mind, you're on the road.
Well, I think we're gonna have to take the rest of the conversation offline here, because we're getting bumpy at this time.
Yes.
And if there is nothing else, we're gonna adjourn it. Eight twenty-one. Maybe it wasn't as fucking meeting as I thought it was gonna be.
I know. Well, we jumped all over and
Yes.